Seven eleven P M and we're gonna go ahead of all this work session in the City Council to order. Um, we'll call please.
Councilmember where is that?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Horizon.
Councilmember Boonah Langan?
Here.
Councilmember Grant? President? Councilmember for Gentry?
President.
Mayor for Tembre?
I don't see her on here.
Mayor on?
There. Okay, um, asking for the approval of the agenda, also probably can't subtract much, but is there any more add or change? It's a work session, we're not gonna need a motion for that. Uh, are there any housekeeping that you'd like to speak about, talk about before we get started, Tracy?
I just noticed that I don't have Microsoft Office on here or a key for it and I have open over document.
And so we will look at, I think Dan, our I T person, asked if we were gonna pay for Microsoft Suites for all of you and I think we did not. But if we need to, we can.
There is a free version, but you're constantly switching back and forth, not a Microsoft product, but a open source.
Gotcha. Okay, we'll find out.
And the other thing you can do, it might take a little longer, is to upload it to Google Doc.
Yeah.
But then you have to use Google.
Yeah.
You too.
I know.
Okay.
You know.
I have, I have, I have a question, just for next week's company meeting. And, uh, I don't necessarily need an update, but can you get an update on this one?
Yeah.
I haven't heard about that in a while and I wanna see where we are and get that thing to finish line, it's been out with quite some time.
The good news is we have a perspective tenant. Um, we have application materials and lease and we are, as soon as we bury our planning director, going to get help during the conditional lease permit application.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when do you think that'll, well, I guess, questions, but uh, when do you think they, these are all gonna come together where the C P, like what's in your mind, uh, when we get through the C P process and then? We actually have a ten, what is your target?
I'm hoping to have a tenant in one person in before it starts next month.
Wow.
But also shouldn't we do, be doing an R F P for a minute?
Correct.
That's a parallel box, if we should be doing it now.
Yeah, we just need to find more time in a day, but, but yes, I, I want to get it to a thing before one person in before that started next month. And then the C P process, you know, started, but what we, we need to do on R F P for a property management company, one tenant is fine for us to manage temporarily, but long term. And then, um, Thursday.
How's Terry?
Um, Thursday, uh, yes, Thursday at ten A M. Um, Tanya Allen from Eco Transit is coming up to look at the house because they may be interested in doing a master lease with us for one of the rooms. For their, um, drivers for the bus, for the Eco Transit bus.
Okay.
Um, we have talked to the hos- uh, hospital, hospital about doing a master lease with us, so we've just gotten a master lease that we're happy with. So to have the hospital do a master lease with us, if they have people coming, um, you know, for, like, the hu- the hospital, if they need housing, I'd like to also do that at the store. Because I think the store is very disturbing for housing.
Also, pretty much just as soon as there's somebody that goes in it for a short-term period of time, a certain, like, ninety day or?
Yeah, so, well, the long-term lease would be with Eco Transit or the hospital, so they would sign a long-term lease. Uh, but yeah, they had somebody, you know, like a visiting doctor who was here for a year, six months, if we do that. But we need a property management company, we get that many moving parts, we can handle one tenant for now, but. You know, doing the background checks, doing the credit checks, uh, making sure that they do a walkthrough for everybody who goes in and take picture, even a walk, where everything moves out, that is a. Um, and in collecting rent, I think that was the other issue, so you don't have a. We want, it would be easier if we just had a property management company to handle all of that and then they just remit the monies to us and sign leases and all that.
I think the property manager, helping also be responsible for some cleaning common areas, we have a lot of side, you know.
Yeah, that also looks good, I was over there, uh, a week ago, um, walking through a perspective tenant and the house looks great, I mean, I. You know, could use a vacuum and dusting, but it's moving, it's moving ready, it's looks great and. You know, it's, it's still furnished, um, we still have kitchen utensils, so there are people who are coming. You know, like a visiting doctor, there's, the rooms are all furnished, there are sheets and towels, um, so it's in. It's a really good, and the, um, even the ground keeping has been going over there and maintaining ground for us. The only thing is, we're gonna need to get a handy person over there to fix the garage space, the door to the garage is so old that the panels have fallen out and the garage won't, the door won't close, so that is not. It's secure, if we like it right now, there's nothing really, there's just some leftover housing items in the garage, but I think for usable storage space for bikes and sporting equipment, we need to have it repaired so it can fly. We've been working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like it. Glad we got a little bit of market there, so it's been.
Yeah.
Last council meeting.
I, that's my, I, I apologize, it'll be, it'll be probably a routine update for current hours, because there are, we want, yeah.
Lots more?
Yeah.
I had one housekeeping thing too and it, it came up as knowing that we were gonna have this one. About the sandwich board sign, I noticed along our avenue, the way, wayfinding signs, is that what I'm supposed to call them?
Yes.
They're pretty worn, the wood is worn and we need some tinder, a lot of care to pull it loose, so. And I don't know how to do.
I think it's been done before winter, thank, I, I've noticed the same thing, I put it on a list, I don't know where the list is, but thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, that might be something that we can do in conjunction with some of the ideas we come up with tonight.
Okay.
Yes, and I noticed that the one at, at City Hall doesn't have brochures and there's no brochures, and we just need a little, like, T L C, like you said.
Well, I think it seems to be in the lower corners, I have to say, it didn't necessarily, look at all the top corners, I'm worried that if they're not weatherized before winter, we, we could have to rip, like, it's not just repair.
Um, yeah, but they, it needs a lot, because we, it, I don't realize how much of that is wood.
Wood, right.
Uh, almost the entirety of this wood, the structure itself, and all, and then the, you know, whatever they, you know, had put on it. Um, is, is not that.
Well, I wondered if it was covered still under warranty, they're not that old and who knows?
Probably two or three years old at this point.
You can find out, I think I have the name of the company from Sarah Diggs.
It's, I have to call and, yeah.
The other thing I was gonna say, like, I drove by our parking station, it was available and it was car charging on it.
No way.
They were.
My, uh, my is, my is persistent, so.
True story. Cause I love them. I don't, no, I don't think so. I don't remember. Can you come around with the book trash free?
Okay, any other?
Oh, we could be here for hours, man. We should get down to business.
Okay, uh, so I sent everyone what we have to start with, which, uh. Actually, Myda, did you get the email with the photos?
Yeah.
So just, just a couple things to start with, so we know what we're talking about, uh. We're, when I say sandwich board sign, we're talking about the portable signs that are popping up there, little A friends, so I took some photos here, yeah, so you can see on that. Display.
Chaven, can you see the big nurse?
Yeah, and our planning director, Chaven, is joining us virtually this evening, thanks, Chaven, and then is M M? Uh, who's M M doing thing?
It's Julie now. It's a community member.
Okay, okay, um, because Christiana is, uh, she is going to try and join us, she had a dental procedure today, so I told her she's not feeling up to it, she, I'll brief, brief her later. Um, I think she said she'd be out of her procedure around seven and I said, look, it's totally okay. So this is what we're talking about, that, there, um, those are a couple, and then the, the other photo, uh, I think shows ones, right, if you come into. There's the red railroad and then just one more shot of ones coming right into town, so. This is what we're talking, so leave that photo up for a second. So this is what we're talking about, this is, uh, all these photos were taken in our natural historic corridor. And, uh, if you, I've sent the summary of portable sign regulations. And that's the bullet pointed memo or bullet pointed document that I sent you all council members last night. And the bottom line is if you scroll to the map. Uh, on, that is attached to that, and Myda will give you a second to get there, but the bottom line is Christiana, our city attorney, has given us a legal opinion that. The red line on our historic corridor and are, in our code, portable signs that you see in those photos are not legal. It's, it's a little odd because it kind of does go down Ninth Street, if you look, it goes, um, uh, east on Ninth Street on the map, but regardless, those signs that we see right there are currently illegal under our code. So for tonight, I think my only goal for this work session is just to get guidance from you all as to what we would like staff to look into. Uh, we can talk about options, but I, I think the discussion for everybody here just needs to center around. Uh, do we wanna enforce the current code and have these signs removed? Uh, or do we choose to change the code to make them legal and have this be what looks, what it looks like going forward? That's certainly an option, the other option is to, uh. Enforce our code and have them removed and create some sort of plan for some other type of advertising, clearly, businesses feel as though they need these signs to direct people to their businesses, that's why they're doing it. Um, but is there a better way to get that information across? And so I, I feel like a couple of things. And this pic- picture in particular, um, you know, it doesn't match the character, uh, but actually, there's a, there was a plastic yellow one too, that I, I thought, like, does that really, is that the, the? You know, our historic corridor, is this the look that you want? I don't know, whoever passed the initial sign code, we're not sure what their thinking was. So I think that's, uh, I, I, I don't, Mayor, I don't know how you would like to, to allow the discussion to happen, but I think what I would like to see the outcome is. At least some guidance on take them out, leave them in, take them out and put something else in its place, so the, um, council member Grant mentioned some of the wayfinding that we have. And in speaking with some of the businesses, um, I asked actually, um, Avery and Tony, who are, uh, juridical coffee, and they have a sandwich board sign, I asked them if they could make it tonight and they, they couldn't. But I know that they have mentioned to Nancy Bailey that businesses may be interested in helping fund some other type of wayfinding that's more appropriate, that matches our historic corridor a little more. And maybe something that matches the other way, wayfinding that we have. Uh, because I do think we can serve our businesses by helping them, you know, people find their business in a perhaps more appropriate way for our. The look of our main street.
So you talked about some sort of directory?
Yeah, so the other question, and then the other question is. Who, who are these signs for? Are these for pedestrians or cars? Right, so these appear to be signs that are for automobile traffic, they're big, they have big arrows. Some of our wayfinding, you've seen in other towns, their wayfinding is more for pedestrians, or do we wanna make something that's for whole?
Our wayfinding there currently is for pedestrians, it's not intended for drivers, because the thoughts, not big enough for drivers.
Right.
I think this has to be blinders and, and pedestrians, obviously. Um, I, I'd like to digress a little, I think what we, what we, over the years and conversations with business people, they are very adamant that they need. These signs, now, they're not gonna love the idea of moving up their sides, they're. Prepared for, you know, for them to be unhappy with that, uh, but I love the idea of putting a plan in place that is business wayfinding. Uh, that they pay for upfront, they're, they're gonna cover the cost of this, whatever it is, but we don't have to defer that cost, we know of it. So that, that's, that's my opinion, but my opinion also is, there's no such thing as grandfathering opinions.
Right, and so I asked, um, I specifically asked Christiana about that, because so, this is what's unfortunate with, uh. You know, a lot of turnover at City Hall, and some of the businesses, I think, they're, they're feeling that some, some of these are grandfathered. So I specifically asked Christiana to address that, so you'll see that in the regulation bullet point, that there's no such thing as grandfathered it. So the bottom line is, I, I do feel for the businesses, this is illegal, has been illegal, so the question then is, like with the mayor's thing is. How do we address their group, their need, and if they're willing, if businesses are willing to contribute toward profit, right now, of course, the businesses are paying for the cost of this. We're, we're not, you know, so if we ask them to do something different, they bear the cost of it, I don't think it's. It's any, you know.
We know when these regulations will put in place.
So our most recent version of the sign code, I believe, was, this is what we're researching, our most recent version of the sign code was two thousand fifteen. Um, and then, then the question is, uh, it looks like Christiana and I researched it, it looks like that was an amendment to a prior code. So I don't know when.
Because I can't remember a time when there wasn't sandwich board sign.
Right.
Mayor, permit.
A couple questions, whenever he's wanting to place, certainly there was no messaging.
Yeah, but I had one out here and I paid a, per net and, and then they ran over it with the snow.
I actually had one up for the bar and I think I got permission from the city to put it up.
And that's what's happened over time, is that sometimes we've given permits to these, so I think one of them is permitted in. I don't know why, some people came into City Hall, we would look it up and say, you get one, or maybe somebody else looked at the code more deeply and said, no, you can't have them, I mean. Until we asked Christiana to write up this memo, we were questioning, can these signs be out there?
So I see in here a couple things, first of all, it speaks, and the question I have is, is there another, this is related but different. Is there anything that allows or prohibits a, a, a retailer along Harrison to take a rack of clothes out and say, sale rack? Is there, is there a prohibition to taking your words on the outside and having sale, you know, whatever it may be?
The answer is, then we have what's called an approach with permit, and if that would apply, in that case, now I'm not saying it doesn't. Uh, but it's, especially applies to people who have bicycle accidents in front of their, or tables and chairs.
So they have to actually have a permit for tables and chairs or bicycle racks, yeah, bicycle racks outside there, they have to have a permit, that's what, twenty-five ounces?
Yeah, and so for example, we just had the first one at Island where, so this is very common, most cities have, and the freshman's permit, and so for any, like, public seating, but we, we have the paper opera house to do one for the scaffolding.
Okay.
So anytime anybody approaches on a public way, we give them an approach for a permit, it says how long, it's usually, a lot of cities have people, they're never here.
Okay, and, and does that allow you annual, like, daily, so if I said I have an approach in front of my business, uh, I can put my clothes rack out every day of the year?
The rules, yes, we have absolutely six feet minimum.
Okay.
Of, of travel space.
And I'm, and I'm asking this because it states here in, in, uh, in bold, no portable signs are allowed on the sidewalk of Harrison Avenue, right, sidewalks. If you, if you look down a little lower, right, it, it also says, the third bullet up from the bottom, it says, the sign must be located on the curb side of the sidewalk. But shall not extend over the curb, the way I read that is, there is a, there is something that is between the sidewalk and curb. That's what, I mean, I'm just trying to come up with some gray language in here, right?
So.
Is that, I mean, I would think putting up, up, some sort of sign in the sidewalk on Harrison would be, be not something you want, if it's in not the sidewalk. Right, meaning it's between the curb and the sidewalk, are they allowed?
No.
Why not?
There's no such thing as between the curb and the sidewalk.
I see trees planted, I see tr- I see trees planted.
With their, so.
So I think what, okay, I think where you're, uh, where you're thinking. I think we're on the same page, but there are no portable signs along Harrison. If you're off, yes, if you're off of Harrison, that's where it says, they may be placed on the sidewalk and thrown another business, only if the sign owner gets written permission. So if you look above, it says, um, there, so portable signs are allowed on the retail floor and commercial zone, these are subject to certain exceptions, and then you read below. The exceptions are, uh, that they're not allowed on Harrison at all.
See, I don't see the at all, I see it's allowed, you know, I'm, I'm just seeing, well, I'm just gonna say this. I'll, I'll concede and just, I was pushing the point to see if there was any language in there that was gray in nature, so back to the point of, so that's all I wanted.
Well, it's, it's an excellent point, and what I would say is, when we go through this process and we, we make sure that our code is in alignment with what we're going to do, that we make sure there's not that loophole.
Okay, well, yeah, and, and, and the other piece is, is I, I, I will say, I am in favor right now of some sort of sandwich board, I actually think that there could be an opportunity. And I'm not saying it's a long-term solution, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, there should be some regulations on the design of the sandwich boards and where they're placed along the, along the, along if we do.
Oh, yeah, if, um, if we are going to allow them, that fifteen square feet per side, it's pretty darn big.
Yeah.
Which is, we, but, well, you could probably do about half of that.
Like, so. One thing about is that, uh, councilor Grant is having that for, and those.
So it's got a logo.
No, I wanted to say that I felt strongly that the signs that are up, the ones you photographed, the ones I just counted as I came this way, they're. This is not being against those businesses, but it's visual litter, it, it becomes too much when you're driving, when you're walking, it's like, what, what am I looking at? And I feel strongly about that, in addition to the being not legal.
Yeah, I'm gonna count that, because I actually think it makes a town look a little bit funky.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna be a Hilton head where if you scratch your butt on the street, they're gonna give you the ticket.
Is that a reward?
So I kinda like that, we're pretty, we're so in a funky town.
We're at a place where the reason this has come up is that they are for a little, for liberating a lot more. And so when you have a permanent system, the, the issue is, how do you draw the line? You, do you say, well, okay, you know, there are, you know, twenty-five now and there's gonna be forty next summer and there's, so the question is. How do we put a limit on it without being unfair to future businesses that come in, if they say, well, you know, every single store has a sandwich board sign, I want one, and then the next business is, well, now I want two, you can't see money more. At what point do we decide? It's.
That's, that's where I thought it was, I don't want steel, you know, I wanna show the air, of course, but the question I have is, like, it might not be a long-term solution. Right, I'm just saying, there might be some things to try on that we may not like, right? I, I'm, I don't necessarily like visual litter, the one on the corner of my street up there, I don't like that one, I think it looks tacky, it's out of place, there's no feng shui about it whatsoever, right? But there was supposed to be some sort of, uh, way of putting these sandwich boards, of course, there'd have to be some sort of limit, I don't know what that is, but also maybe a design criteria of colors. The size, make, make it much smaller, making them different, you know, it would actually have to be reviewed by somebody, maybe not the council. However, you'd have to submit the application and it would have to go through an artistic review of the sign.
My pushback to that is sidewalks, are sidewalks for signs or sidewalks for pedestrians? And at some point, you're gonna have, there's, there's no room for pedestrians because we've got sandwich boards.
And, and, and just to say that, that's where I was trying to say, is there a space between the sidewalk where people walk? Or where can you place them in those, you know, on the corner one, there was a picture of that one on the corner, that it was on Sixth Street and Harrison, that it wasn't in anybody's way. Right, in the same place on the other side for Mo's Barbecue, Mo's Barbecue, I don't believe is in the way, not the.
And the, then you have a finite space, so we'd need a way to decide who gets that space.
Whoever paid this, I don't mind. It's a bit plus. Having lots of sandwich boards and have bid processing every year for each lot of sandwiches.
There, there are a couple things about this that are, that, I kinda like the thought process around, maybe sandwich boards aren't, aren't so awful, maybe they, they add some character. Um, but, and then if we overregulate what they look like, then, then they lose all character, now they all look the same. I don't already know with that, in, in terms of size, what's the size that's effective versus the size that we've learned, uh, you know. Reasonably pleasing, I don't know.
I feel like a lot of it, um, this is already pointed out, it's just in the chart. I, I don't think that we. I, I, I like the idea of being the sandwich board's in the group here, what streets here, it doesn't bother me as much. Um, that's also probably me and my young age, but, um, I, I like it, and I also think it adds a bit of personality and wayfinding that is necessary, I would agree with that, and that's local something. Most of it, yeah, but. So I, I think we, if we were to, the one thing I'll say is, if we were to remove it, I think we should have already have a plan in act.
So I I think we, if we were to, the one thing I'll say is, if we were to remove it, I think we should have already have a plan in acting.
But there's also the issue of accessibility. Right now, all the ones are on the corner, they've not always been on the corner. They've been in the crosswalks, they've been in the in the middle of the sidewalk. And again, what is the sidewalk for? It's pedestrians to be safe, right?
So we could talk about placement. And you you talked about, you gave a couple of good examples of good placement, but there are a lot of examples of not good placement. And and to your point, there are only so many good placement opportunities along Harrison Avenue. So when we run out of good placement opportunities, then where do they go?
So I appreciate the character, the character of our town too, and our our parkiness, whatever, greediness, you know, all of those, those fun adjectives. But we we've made headway with the weight finding signs that that embrace who we are as a community. They look nice. People actually use them. Why not continue that and clean it up and address the issues of where people walk? The visual litter, the safety issues, all of those things.
I think maybe one of the things, research-wise, would be helpful, and I wish I'd had more time, but just go around to other cities that have done some weight finding that that works, like a size that works, like a look that may work, and then maybe try and figure out what the cost would be and where those might go, because so much easier to think about solving an issue via the visual of what the solution could look like. Uh, but um, I think, well, I put in the notes here and I, cause I saw head nodding, was that if we do decide to not go with the temp, uh, you know, the portable sandwich boards on us, that we should have a plan in place for if we do that. I think, was that a general agreement? Yeah, okay.
Make sure the public knows about it.
So I'm gonna throw out a suggestion, that we do, whatever we're gonna do with sandwich board signs, we we do it, continue it for another year. Or through next fall. And and in that year, we we make sure that we're we're preparing for a solution year after that. Uh, so that we have time to.
Would you think about maybe that's a brand?
Yeah, I know, it's gonna take a year.
It it may not, but you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to give a year's grace to people, I think. But you you're gonna have to give a period of of, you know, emotional stability.
Messaging, you can't just turn them on their heads because somebody's gonna say, this is ridiculous, why are you doing this for us? Can't find anything.
Yeah, if you just pull them, like, this winter, then people are, you know, gonna have.
I don't think there's, I do not think there's any reason to pull them over the winter. I don't, I think we, but we, I think we should have a plan in place. I think we should make sure, that's why the people who are vocal about this, I invited tonight, because I knew that they wanted to be engaged. I specifically told Nancy, I sent her this agenda and said, push this out to any business owners you think might be interested, because I wanted them to know we're, wouldn't worry this and aware this wouldn't be a surprise six months from now, but I think we can work on it for her in a year.
Was this the other point, um, food for thought? What if we, what if we only allowed sandwich board signs for businesses that are not located on the avenue?
That's what most of them are anyway.
All are. Yeah, if my question was, are there any, where if you have a, you also can be initially.
One shop, the elevation goods, they do have one on the side of their shop saying.
What's that? Nancy's there before they have a separate avenue.
Oh, yeah, where they have their mini, you know, prices out there? That's an interesting question. I don't think of that as a sandwich board sign.
I don't either, but.
Going back to this, it's their storefront too, that that changes, where the others that we were thrown out are not right there. And.
Can I photograph it? Let me do you count, cause I.
Well, I counted it this side and I think I counted nine. Yes, these.
So any business in our sign code is allowed twenty five square feet of signage. So if Mo's Barbecue has a twenty five square foot sign at at Mo's, and they have another fifteen square foot on the avenue, is that in contradiction to code?
And what about their little special, daily special part of that?
No, it's outside of the rails.
Anyway, I picked the, picked a supportive, we don't wanna go back down that part of the rabbit hole. Um, I I like the way the direction we're going, um, we just need to give some direction to Lori about, okay, how do we want to proceed?
I think they need to be smaller, like the ones you show, the railing, the, I mean, it's a form are big and ugly.
Yeah, I think they have to go through some sort of artistic review, like for, so if somebody doesn't have a hand pink flashing.
Yeah, but based on what?
Well, so the the.
Just the, so the historic district has a color panel. We have a color permit for historic, so they would have, I mean, we do that. They, with you talking about color limitations, and so I was gonna say, size limitations, you want smaller color limitations, we could say that has to be in the palette and then the historic district colors.
I would think.
Do you mind if I jump in here real quick? Sorry. Um, I just wanted to, can you hear, can you guys hear me all right? Sorry, my speakers aren't working. Can you hear me all right? Okay, good. Um, so there was a recent Supreme Court case that regulated the, um, that prohibits municipalities from regulating the content of signs. So any kind of regulations that we come up with, uh, need to be based on time, place, and manner only.
Going back to when we were having that conversation about the mural with the short looking minor that, you know, remember we were told, then we can't.
You can regulate, so you can, you can, you can't regulate content, but you can regulate color. You could, that's not.
I I believe, I believe color is content. Um, so you you can regulate, you know, you can establish.
We can, we can, con- content is, is the, is the messaging. So like if it said, you know, heck yes, come eat at Mo's. And we're like, well, that's kind of swear word. We don't want to say heck yes.
No, there's, there's, there's words on there.
So that's the content. Um, you you can have design guidelines. I guarantee you, you can regulate color. I, if we have. And we can require someone to paint their house that color, we can certainly require them to.
Not a color requirement to the historic district.
We have palette.
No, we have a palette, it's not required.
Well, some sort of design guidelines.
I I feel like that's contrary to why people want the sign. They want the sign so it's seen and out. So if we're gonna do that, why not do it as a standardized weight moving sign?
I think we do this one step at a time too. I think, I think this next year, we we put some regulations in place that require sales force to be permitted, that we, that that limits the size and maybe, uh, has a suggested count of color palette and then, you know. And placement is very important, yeah.
What do, so we do for the historic district, we have things um run by the Historic Preservation Commission. So that's the, do we wanna create a new system or do we wanna use that system that's already in place for design review?
I think design review could be done by an administrator, whoever that ends up being. I think that's a reasonable. Yeah.
Somebody, I know.
Yeah, whoever that might be.
Yeah, whoever that might be. And and I just wanted.
Whatever that planner might be.
I in, I I completely understand, like sidewalks are meant for walking, right? And something that I is interesting about, uh, Lego is Harrison Ave, once you get off of Harrison Ave, our sidewalks turn into crap, right? And if you're in any other historic town, you can actually at least make a four A in one direction, one block or the other, and actually be able to connect sidewalks around with the family and come back to another block, which is not possible. Pretty much in any single whole block off of Harrison, you cannot make a single walk without missing a piece of sidewalk. And I was talking to this in our drive down Pine, and I know this is getting off to a point, so I will go here quick and come back. Is that there are certain sections that connectivity is so close, it's literally a half a clock of sidewalk that's missing, that would create a full block. Our first full block of complete sidewalk, maybe around on the east side, maybe, maybe where the the new left-hand business centers.
I would say this, I don't wanna digress anymore than you do. However, I have had this conversation with the street department. In 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 subsequent years' plans, we have to have paving and sidewalks in those plans. Now, money, 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 money. So that's, that's a budgetary conversation, but that that's a direction for city council um that could take flight, say, okay, we'll we'll put it out, this much money, we expect X amount of it to be for paving, X amount of.
If you were to go from Sixth Street right now towards Fifth on Pine, it would be less pay, less sidewalk for, to put a sidewalk in there than we put in last year. It would be about, about twenty five thousand dollars to put that piece of sidewalk in there. I know it's probably not gonna happen, I'm just saying, I hate seeing opportunities like this with everything getting prepared and putting things down to actually not make it so you can walk around the corner from your post office and hit a sidewalk, for goodness sake, to get back to Main Street or Harrison, uh, without going onto the dirt or onto the road, which no normal people do. I s- I get back to my point and I'm going back up out of my little rabbit hole and saying, if we had this type of connectivity around our city center beyond Harrison, I feel people would find these places much easier if we actually had connectivity, right? Who is gonna go down a dimly lit second street towards the Silver Dollar on a gravel piece of sidewalk? And and around a chain link fence on our historic district, at the edge of our historic district, we have a chain link fence.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm getting back to the fact that like, this is gonna take time.
It's just, I I have to comment on those because it is a requirement of the property owner to maintain their sidewalks. And if we continue to put in sidewalks, no one's ever gonna maintain their sidewalk. That's.
That's true.
I'm not even trying to be honored to have a sidewalk and maintain and maintain it.
Yeah, and they have to replace it, whatever it takes. It's all, the answer is yes, a lot of homeowners can't possibly do that. But some business owners like like our business certainly can.
That is not a public benefit. I think that if we're gonna be changing, if we're gonna be redoing our streets and re-gaming our streets, that we at the same time have an obligation to our citizens to redo the sidewalks. And almost any other municipality, especially on East Coast, they have it. So if you replace the 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 street, you're replacing, maintaining the sidewalk at the same time.
But then you charge the property.
Well, then charge them, because we need to get something, because our, our, I personally think with this sign, we're, we're, we're not gonna tell people, fix your street, and they're gonna say, I don't have money to do it. So then we're still not gonna have a sidewalk.
Yeah, you put a lead on their house, and they'll sell you collect.
They put a lead on their house, if that's what we do.
That sounds a bit too intense. Also, I think we should get back to.
Yeah, anyways, it just goes back though, because it was.
I think that we definitely should consider getting rid of it in the way that they exist now. I don't think anyone disagrees with that. And to the point, I think what we've agreed on is temporarily, a good fix would be solution finding some type of regulation on how big and wide they can be and places they can be. I don't think that's necessarily a bad place to leave it at for the time being. Um, you can put a sign here and these are the lots that you can put signs in and you can, I don't know, buy the lot or whatever the process looks like.
Well, they're all around sevens. They're not all, most of them are around sevens.
Right. Mina, I sent you uh an email. If you open, there's a couple of, these are more pedestrian related ones, but this is, um, this is actually where I'm calling. There's a, there's some weight finding, actually, there's. I went to Pinterest, no, I'm finished. Let's see, so, oh, yeah, let me just close that out. So you scroll a little bit over so they can see the seat. So this is, what you can see is the, on the left, it's your traditional, um, you know, map of the city for pedestrians. And then you've got a bigger sign that is for that particular sign, it looks like public. Uh, well, actually, it's more like places, so it's like they're a packing house district in historic village. But things like that could be both. So one, one is for pedestrians, one is more for cars, but something like that, that's a little more appropriate. I mean, they've clearly gone with a certain color theme for their, um, you know, they're red and black. But I think something along those lines, is that what we're thinking if we're doing, if we're talking about?
Wayfinder for business. Remember, when we did this wayfinder, we were told we couldn't put on our wayfinding signs because of the grant fund, we we couldn't put businesses on, okay? Now, these will be a separate set of wayfinding signs that are gonna be paid for by the businesses. So, yeah, it's.
And I think that should definitely be the requirement. I mean, we should be there for any other way of signing, posts.
Yeah, once we know what it's costing, we could say, okay, it's gonna cost you four hundred dollars to have a wayfinding sign up there. But then we start taking away the option.
Mina, I just sent you another one, which I think is, um, it, in their ideal. So I I just Googled, uh, publicly finding minute for municipalities. And so this next one is more what we were sort of talking about. Can you scroll down a little bit so you can see? This one is on a like. This is one of the things that Nancy had sort of mentioned. Scroll a little bit more so you can see that, like, you know, there's a hanging basket hanging. So this, like, if you wanna do something that's more maybe appropriate for to find businesses that is, looks like it would fit our, you know, historic corridor, something like this, where you can see it from a car, uh, but it's not overwhelming, it's not visual clutter, it's actually, you know, with the hanging baskets would fit in with what we're doing already.
Here's an interesting possibility, is those signs, we we have hanging baskets now with arms to stick out. If we were to do something similar to that, that could be like, um, instead of solid signs, could be banner signs. So it's easier to change when a business, you know, uh.
That's gonna be a pain in the ass.
Exactly, but if they're banner signs, which will look fantastic.
Do their own logo or.
We could do a lot of different things, that's right.
Yeah, so look at the stuff, might might have looked, they stopped right in the middle. Do you see that with the basket, the banner in the middle?
That would, this is what, in my mind, when I was, when you said that, just boom, with the little arrows, with, you know, three arrows going down this way, because everything happens on. That's the one I had in my head.
I I kinda did too.
Something like this screams fucking rich. I don't know if we wanna have Mo's.
Okay, so banner, banner signs is getting a little traction.
Like, I think the banner gives you the ability to be flexible with what you want it to say.
And you might be able to get like six, three businesses on a banner with them.
And so the thing, and this was one of Nancy's, the only thing we would wanna think about is we do switch, we'd have to let the uh, business owners know, do you switch out those banners for some things?
No, 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 these would be different banners.
No, but.
These are the other side of the pole. All of our banners right now go on the inside, the sidewalk side of the pole, these would be on the street side.
Two sets of banners on.
It's very possible, one inside. And one, one might be, you know, the the Lego summer banner, which is just, just a, you know, and and then the other, other one would have, you know, businesses. I'm just thinking out loud at this point, I don't know that that's the right way to go.
I don't think that's a bad idea. Uh, it wouldn't be all time, obviously, we only use sides of senior graduation, you know, certain level events.
Yeah, there's some too. Yeah, there's some too.
Uh, and I, I don't think two signs is too much if we constrain.
We actually have four sets of banners plus high school seniors. We have historic banners, summer banner, winter banners.
I mean, that's like, it's gonna be about those and what the barber shop, and it's wild, you know.
What do we feel about like, asking them to be overhead, over, cause they're on Main Street, right, most of these like restaurants and barber shop, for example, are on Main Street and they have property there. Is there, there's no necessary regulation on saying they put overhead on their own building sign, they just say, this is a barber shop, right?
I, I just think it would be really tacky.
It would be, but.
But why is that worse than a fifteen square foot sandwich board? That's eighteen by thirty ish, I don't know how big our short banners are, but.
It sounds about right. Well, it's a little bit higher up, you have to make more of an effort to look at it, also, I mean, it addresses the walkability.
Right, it addresses that, it's
Because it gets it up.
Uniformity, it's uniformity, not something bright yellow versus something tan and brown versus something blue and red.
Well, I mean, I think you should leave that up to the whoever's advertising, you don't want.
I think we have to.
Everything the same color. Wanted to represent your, your branding.
We actually went through for all of our wayfinding, including our gateway signs, that all the wayfinding that helped. We went through a public process and the public decided on the design, I mean, they were given some, some options. And we even had charrettes, people drawing stuff here, and then the person who was tasked with coming up with the final designs. Temperatures, you know, some template designs anyway, but nonetheless, it was a proper process. And so, uh, we can do the same thing with this, I mean, it's a long process, but.
We can certainly, I, I agree with Councilor Grant, that I think that the banner signs are cleaner and better looking than the portable signs. And we could certainly, you know, we could suggest a color palette, we could also uh, have some design criteria, I mean, I, we don't probably want something that's fluorescent neon and pink and green.
Are you thinking we'd have one banner for each business?
I, uh, I, I was thinking that, is that what you were thinking, Tim, that?
That's what I was thinking. Six of them at Seventh Street, then how do you do that?
Birthcon person.
Well, I, I think this is supposed to be more directional than advertising, just to let people know, those barbecue with an arrow. It does, you know, doesn't have to have a lot of information on it, or.
I don't disagree, I think that would be fine.
Coffee with an arrow, anything like that, and I think you put two or three on a banner, depending on how deep you then you might decide the banners need to be deeper than eighteen inches, maybe twenty four inches or something like that, I don't. Just trying to think of ways to do it.
And it addresses the.
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, that's kind of cool. So.
Coming and going is if you have businesses paying their fee for the year to be on a banner, and if, if they're out, we just had they're on the banner till the year is up and then we re-up them, because we're affordable. I'm assuming you're affordable, so is there some consensus that there, we like the visual of that? Of this one or the banner?
Well, why you got the sense of people like the banner was, you know?
I don't care with either, to be honest. I think both the banners and these look good and I'd be okay with.
I kind of like this.
And we can't, we still put up.
Is I think that besides Tim, nobody else owns a business on Main Street or Harrison right now. And so I really feel that these are great ideas that we have to consider. I think that we have to get all the businesses into a serious work session, but with us, because if you don't. Well, I'm not talking like a real invitation, every business in here and figure out how to facilitate some sort of, um, community design charrette and maybe a couple of them, right, so where we can come up and present some ideas, eight sandwich boards, banners, these, what do they want, what do they think it looks like? This is their business that they're gonna attract people to, what do they think it takes to get out there? If we start forcing, you know, talent about them to get involved, I think we're, so I think all of these could be on the table. I really truly feel very strongly right now that we have to get these businesses engaged and almost mandatory because I'll tell you one thing, I don't know what the right look is, right? And, and I, I think that if we don't include the businesses into this, we're gonna do ourselves a terrible disservice and move in the wrong direction before we even get going.
But not all of the businesses on Main Street are represented on a sandwich board, are you suggesting, are you saying that that Tim would be able to put a sign at nine straight pointing?
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm not talking about any type of, I'm not talking about anything, I'm talking about getting the businesses in here and say, what do you want your retail portal and historic district to, to look like, right? And, and that's because.
I, I think that's, uh, I appreciate what you're saying, I think that's a, that's a little dangerous way to go about it. You could just say, what do you want, what, we want what we got.
Doesn't, it doesn't matter, this is the whole thing, is that if you include people and you can still gain input and have a brilliant ownership to this, that's what I'm saying.
You might, you might have to set some expectations with the planning.
We wanna hear your.
The status quo is not okay. And here's, here, here's, what we do wanna hear in terms of the options that we're considering, what you think.
And to be clear, I think this is as much for the businesses as it is for the people who use the sidewalks, the tourists, the so on and so forth, so if we're gonna be extending the open grays, uh, to these businesses, I think it's, should be doing the same to people who regularly use these sidewalks. People who live here, people, which, I, it just seems to me like, I don't know, I feel like if you genuinely felt really, really strong about this and we give enough of a notice, I don't think we necessarily have to go out of our way to get those people to come. Maybe this one meeting isn't enough and we do another meeting and say, we're doing this again, this is our final meeting.
We need community feedback is what I'm saying.
We did a couple, a series of public meetings, actually, um, and, and we did voting and did a lot of different things. Um, I don't know if that's the right way to go about this, but I, I agree with you, we need inputs. Uh, we could, we could invite anybody to attend, what the businesses certainly do attend, it could be open to anybody. And I'm thinking maybe we have to do this in sometime in January.
Something I haven't seen in any of these is actually businesses being advertised on, right, it's all library, restaurants, toilets.
Those are all.
I don't, I have never really seen something that says, besides, eight, those eight, old eight boards is what they're called, I believe. That they're, um.
Porting towards a business.
Pointy sort of business, like an actual business.
So there are a number of consultants that do, you know, wayfinding and different types of design, it's trying to there's obviously some that do for municipalities.
I don't know if I feel comfortable having a consultant just for wayfinding for businesses, if we were to revamp our whole wayfinding system. For sure, but seems like a lot of money invested to try to get uh, this, you know, admittedly problem, uh, solved, just doesn't seem worth it to me.
I don't think we would revamp our wayfinding system and we've spent years and, and a lot of money putting the wayfinding system in plenty that we have.
Yeah.
What, what were you thinking?
Well, I, just to address the idea of a consultant. Any consultant.
Maybe it's a good one, maybe we don't need a consultant, maybe we just need, uh, the internet.
That's pretty, that's pretty standard right there, that has no anything.
It is boring.
Is that, um, I think I actually know. I'm gonna guess that is.
Corner Ranch, California.
Oh, I was, I was gonna get one of the, um, repurposed shopping malls. You know, like, they tore down shopping malls and put in housing and grocery stores and. Well, so I've taken some notes. Uh, I think one of the, I wanna make sure that the man, when taking away his breakfast, I think the mayor said that this is status quo is not okay.
Right.
And that if we do anything, if we change the current situation, the city needs to have a plan for what happens next. We shouldn't just take out the signs and have no alternative.
Well, plan one could be to be going to this, this permanent process with, with, with parameters. That could be a, a plan in place, um, to, to, to go through step one. But then to, to go to the next step, we would, we would definitely need, if we're gonna go to that step. Oh, that's terrible, uh, we're gonna go to that step, then we definitely need to have that plan in place before we.
Right, but I guess what I may take away, what I was saying at the start was, okay, the, the status quo is not okay. So that's the answer to our first question, the second question I had was, well, do we just say, fine, we're gonna enforce the ordinance? All portable signs just go away, period, that's it, we're done, and the answer to that question was, no, if we say portable signs are not okay, and we're gonna enforce that portion of our code, we want to have an alternative, yeah, okay, that's all.
And then our short term alternative is potentially limiting the areas in which signs can be. How many of those are vices, um, how many signs there are, um, and what site they can be, so just setting parameters on what sandwich boards can currently exist until we figure out the semester plan and get everyone together, which is gonna click that, uh, what's gonna look best. So I think I'll replace.
But I think, you know, would be, we can invite people, but I don't think it would be a bad, I think, you know, let's say the next time we have a session, a work session to talk about this, maybe divvy up some businesses that have sandwich board signs, and each of us can talk to three of them. Just go sit down and talk.
You know, this is, this is the exact type of awesome work session that we need, a public, like a press release for. Tell people that we're actually working on this, right, this is where that person comes in. Where we're telling our story and saying, today's work session, this is the signage, right? Sharing our story.
Yeah, I talked to Anna and Patrick a little bit at the Herald about this, is that, you know, their bandwidth to cover everything is not great. So I actually have offered to summarize sometimes what the council is doing and send it to them. Just, I can draft something and send it to them and say, this is what we're thinking, we love public input and here's Max's.
It's just, yeah, what we're working on, because, so they know that they're in order, be requesting their input in the future. That, I mean, there is good, we, we've identified a need, a change that has to happen. And, and we don't know what the answer is yet, and we're not gonna do anything stupid in the meantime, but we need, we're gonna, we're gonna start working through this.
Let's talk about that and maybe you and I divvy that up. You know, you, if we do it every two weeks and we just buy a space to paper, I'm not asking for free space, just buy a quarter page and and, and it could be something as simple as bullet points, but I, I don't read too broad of myself. I think we should, I think Max is right, we should be doing it, let's do it. And I would.
Do we have Facebook that we consistently use, I know how those, but.
No, that's one of the reasons I was bringing up the communications thing, is that we don't have we, the city does not have an effective way to communicate with public, we rely on the press covering what we do as opposed to being proactive about it. And I think what I would love to have, if we do get part-time communication for someone is to create, um, you know, maybe you can subscribe to get the planning, I mean, planning package, city council package that have a newsletter we can subscribe to and we have to post, like, you know, here's what's going on this week, time is gonna get paid or here's this thing and little updates that we can push out. And, and it was actually the paper offer had asked them to send out a survey that they were doing. We don't have a great way to get this. So having, uh, electronic newsletter, we could just push it out and say, word of mouth, we're gonna have a town, town hall, or here's how we want input, or you know, call us, let us know your business, you know, but right now we, we solely rely on newspapers, whether we purchase advertising or the cover.
Yeah, if we want to reach the people that currently aren't being reached, people my age and of course, people, most people our ages, um, I, I don't feel like reading the newspaper the most often. Um, it, I, it has to be, I, I don't know any other platform that is as used other than WhatsApp, but that's not something we really advertise on. Um, then Facebook in our, what, we, we need a Facebook.
I would, I would do, Facebook is, you know, we, we hear nationwide, a lot of younger people are using Facebook. Is, you know, ninety percent of all the young people, what they use? YouTube. Yeah, that was, yeah, nonetheless, I, I think you're absolutely correct, in this community, Facebook is a good communication tool.
And we need to get into this, my God, would you get so much more public response, at least on the Facebook.
Not saying it's great.
Well, I'm, I'm half, half on serious, then what, maybe you might get some comments.
What we wanna, that's the other issue too, the, the comments are difficult because sometimes you can't sell someone's local or someone's just commenting for.
Position for, but, yeah.
Or I love putting comments and answering somebody in bitchin' mode, I don't do it very often.
It's very tempting.
Well, I, I, I completely agree about our lack of, uh, electronic media, whether it's Facebook or some other type of way we reach people other than the newspaper.
I, I give credit to Bell Daily and the Summit Daily because they do a great job keeping those residents out of that bill because they only put murder victims and, and homicides and, and, and violent people are going to jail from my bill. Best ever, they just think that this place is, you know, the roughest part of all of Central. The only other pieces are ski drawing events, ski drawing and, and then.
They just kind of think that it's just all Doc Holiday that lives here.
I think that's, that's a win.
Well, I is, I, I'm meaning to have a car up on watch in my, my backyard. Cause I, I want, I wanna, wanna make that perception of the album.
Alright, so I think, uh, to try and figure out what staff I need to do and perhaps, you know, Chapin and is a short term plan to limit the number of signs and placement, so, uh, as Colonel Hill said, size, color and placement, and then uh, reaching out to the public to get, uh, maybe in sometime in January, uh, another work session where we get attendance and we maybe pull together some of the ideas and things we, we looked at tonight and then commit to a plan.
Excellent, I love it.
Can we get the chamber involved and?
No, chamber doesn't exist, really, uh, tourism panel and BDC are, are, are the, the drivers in this community at this point. And also great communication points, especially this is people, so BDC has done a good job. Oh, yes.
Right, which is why I sent, I specifically sent the invitation to Nancy and asked what their, I'm sure she circulated it. Public, push that a little harder this time, she, I think she is in communication with business owners about this and and, you know, should she have won the basketball in the India banners from my polls, so. Eight seventeen.
You guys are fantastic.
Thank you, Chapin, I hope you feel better. Don't come to the office tomorrow.
Chapin, Chapin, you don't look any better, what's the deal?
It's, it's just, it's just the camera's making me look bad, that's all.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's it.
No, I serious, don't come in tomorrow. You're entitled to work at home.